Calling to roll, Mr. Brown.
Present.
Mr. DeThalke.
Present.
Mr. Jones.
I'm.
Ms. Sykes.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
There in the corner.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you remain standing for all this hours?
All my role.
Let me see the...
The community is being called for doing the Freedom of Public Meetings Act of 1974, and all provisions of that act have been met with adequate notice of this meeting having been transmitted to the township's two official newspapers on December 3, 2015. Tell us when the township council can post it on the official township bulletin board.
Okay. Josh, you have a chat with town or is he coming? So, I know we have some accommodations to do, but we're going to move this to the end of the meeting, waiting for the officers to get back. Does that take care of anyone?
If you give me a second, I'm going to stop this and restart to see if that one's going to go.
It's what it is. For a row, I've read the matters to be presented by the public. Members of the public are invited to submit comments during the public comment portion of this meeting. The Council for Scranton, the Open Public Meetings Act will not publicly discuss personal matters and may choose not to respond to comments made by members of the public during this portion of the meeting. However, the Council will give all comments appropriate consideration and will refer all individual complaints to the township manager. Each citizen will be allowed up to three minutes of speech in order to allow everyone an opportunity to express their opinions or their concerns. At this time, we open up the public to question the comments. If you have a question, please raise your hand, put it through the mic, go ahead, take your name and address for the record.
Do you read about every test here? I did so, so I did three seventy soft lines.
How do you know this happened?
Oh, perfectly. During the, as I've spoken, the last forty-eight hours. The day after, I experimented with the videos. I, like I said, I went to testify in my voice on New Jersey. In the act, if I could display a fiber to the other, display of the TVs connected to one TV, I connected my cell phone. And everybody, you know, stopped for a second and watched.
Did he, did he, he did that?
Yeah.
That's pretty cool.
And it's a, it connect, I just say, it was happy. I appreciate living here for the last, you know, seventeen years.
So you enjoyed the event?
Yeah, I enjoyed it. And my, my second question is, what is the minute for the last meeting? Do you think that's a verbal?
I'm sorry, the minute?
The minute for the last meeting, you think that's verbal for...
We might not get approved that special meeting.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll approve them at the next meeting and then they'll be available.
Okay, okay, okay. And any new program of fair housing or, I mean, like any...
Can you clarify your question?
Uh, any, like any new program of fair housing?
You're talking about the things on the agenda tonight.
Yes.
The parts are, it's, it's just kind of explaining, this gentleman, yeah, he was here to do that, but to explain our, what our fair housing plan and fair share plan are. And so it's just kind of explaining what we already have, more or less, and maybe what we need to do to be in compliance.
Yeah, we're, we're required by Burlington County to submit a fair share housing plan. One of the counties, one of the two counties in New Jersey requires one, I think, at the time for a meeting.
One, if you can clarify, just attempt it, and one, are you, are you going to discuss the vacant spot for the next meeting?
The EMS?
Uh, yeah.
Now, we're discussing that this evening.
No.
No, it's not the agenda. We talked about special meetings, there's only certain things that are allowed in the meeting. We discussed.
Oh, no, no, I don't know, I just, I had, are you going to discuss it before the end of the year?
Right now.
I hear probably a lot before the end of the year.
Determining under negotiations right now.
Okay, and can you clarify for me, is Revolution 2015, oh, eight, two thousand and eight?
Nope. Individual property TRF. Resolution incentive for the sales, certain individual property TRF to all its partners. One more modifying to, uh, one, yeah, modifications.
For lease agreements that I need to go to sales office for six month period.
That, that fourth unit, they're, they're going to move into that fourth unit and use it as a sales office, at, at least for a period of time. And then, that's going to be able to legally lease it, promise.
If I left coming up that night, if, this time coming up, is, uh, five hundred, uh, boys reaching open right from six AM to rush aircraft.
I believe so.
Salty. They say, now, everybody know, you know, the, we both you right.
Two to nine PM.
Oh, two to nine, okay. Thank you for clarifying, Mr. Green. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else this evening for public comment? Nothing to call?
Every time.
All right, at this time, I'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll roll into the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding the resolutions listed on the consent agenda this evening?
Just one minor comment. Could we add, have we advertised here for the composting services?
Not yet, because I think it's approval, so you go out for...
Could we, could we amend that to add a certain quantity of compost to be made available for each of the alleys? Something we haven't done before?
Yeah. I know there, apparently there's an issue with that, and that's why.
There was an issue in the past with that.
Yeah.
I think we should have something, but I think we should look at it.
What was the issue besides the company didn't want to give it to us?
And you know what, honestly, we need to, we probably should be re-annying because she has experience on that and has whole people on that because she came before us and reviewed a lot of the composting issues firsthand.
Okay.
So, probably something that would be new in this time of year before, doing that.
I will say, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we need to go out for that, this very quickly and apparently leave an operation about a contract or a couple of years now.
Can it wait until Monday?
I, probably. I mean, at this point.
We'll table it.
Yeah.
Well, let's see, on the Monday, if you can reach out, thank you, reach out to Randy, talk to her regards to the composting, and the Council would like to have a rehash issues that were done in the past so we can make a obligated, educated decision on the resolution for Monday.
Sure.
Yeah, so do I have a motion to table resolution 2015 that is to abide until next Monday? Second. We're both pleased.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DeThalke?
Yes.
Pledge allegiance.
Or was there anything else?
Well, before we, are we going to have this gentleman explain the fair share housing elements before we vote on it?
Yes, we can do that. Absolutely. Yeah, I'm sorry, that's for the Department of Communications.
Yes, indeed.
Good.
Please.
All right. Uh, again, my name is Megan Stanley, I'm from Seamy Associates, and I assisted in the preparation of this housing element and fair share plan. The reason this is before you tonight, last week at a special meeting, the planning board, I presented this in front of them, and they, they adopted this, this plan. And this is coming out of a New Jersey Superior Court decision from March of this year, which basically said that all affordable housing matters, more or less from here on out, will be taken care of by the courts since nineteen eighty-five and prior to this March. All these matters have been taken care of by the Council on Affordable Housing, or COA, which has, you know, past fifteen years has been pretty quiet. So, um, the court gave us a deadline of December eighth tomorrow to submit an adopted and endorsed housing element and fair share plan. So what we're doing tonight is endorsing what the, what the planning board has adopted last week. And really, what this is, it's two parts. It's a housing element, which is the first section. If you look, first page is a list of deals that go through what's required between the municipal law and the Fair Housing Act to be included in a housing plan element. Um, it's mostly demographics, economic characteristics, characteristics from the census data describing types of housing and the state of housing in Mount Holly. So all of this, all this first half is completely compliant with what the MLU, L and M, FHA call for.
Our individual requirements from law and act were estimated on top of the, the plan.
Yes, yeah, the housing element is just kind of a, a basic, a basic thing. Uh, the second part of the plan is the fair share plan, and I should preface this with, right now, usually in the past, the Council on Affordable Housing has come up with methodology of how to come up with a affordable housing obligation for every town in New Jersey. Since no one has been able to agree on the methodology on how to come up with this number for every, for every town, right now it's kind of in limbo. There's about five or six different people kind of battling it out on how to calculate what every town owes as far as rehabilitation units and new units. So, um, I'm having here, it starts on page fifteen, I just go through what so far has come out, the, there are a couple of different numbers here, seventy-nine, seventy-seven, and twenty-seven units. This refers to the town's rehabilitation obligation, having to rehabilitate substandard housing for low and moderate income people. Again, three different numbers, right now we don't know what's going to happen with these. So this is, what this plan really is tonight is to go through the motions and go through what is called for from that March 2015 decision, to have it into the county by tomorrow, and we're just really going through the motions. We're not expecting to know what your rehabilitation requirement's going to be probably until next April or May. So there's a good chance that we're going to have to come back here and revise this and re, you know, re-endorse it and everything. So that's, that's basically the plan in a nutshell. It takes care of what was required of us from the March 2015 decision. The plan itself's only about a few pages long, the rest of it is, just paints a legal picture of what the town has done in its affordable housing history, how it's complied, and so forth and so on. That's it.
So, the, the, from the COA days, and I realize COA is, like, you know, long gone, didn't do anything, it's, you know, pretty much gone now.
More or less.
Yeah. Under the old COA rules and regulations, we had far met our COA, any obligations because of the, the low and moderate income housing we already have.
Yes, you're, you're an urban aging municipality, and you were declared that in nineteen eighty-nine, and what that said was that any new obligation, or new construction units, reverts to zero and is kind of spread out through the rest of the region and anything, and that only gives you a rehabilitation obligation. And that's being done, the town this year did go for a community development block grant to take care of, I think it's ten.
Yeah, I remember you received that grant, too.
Yeah, oh, good, so we can.
And where are we supposed to go with the rest of the line?
I'm sorry?
Where are we supposed to go with the rest of the line? Have we had another hundred and forty units?
Or reapply?
Only seventy-seven.
Depending on who you talk to, it could be as low as twenty-seven units, so.
Yeah, I realize, well, right now, we just do what we need to do, comply with the deadline. I realize that.
Yes, and typically what also needs to be included in these for rehabilitation obligation is a resolution of intent to bond should no other method come to fund these, these programs, but that's, you know, that's kind of a worst case scenario.
Any other questions? Thank you, Megan. With that being said, do I have a faction on the consent agenda?
Some, yeah.
We're both pleased.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DeThalke?
Yes.
Pledge allegiance.
Are they on the hallway there? I keep on hearing that one.
I'm sorry, I don't know what's going on.
It's okay.
No, it's the way, is the thing that I see.
I get that, but.
I'm on a sound guard.
No.
Somebody's interested.
All right, what we'll do is, we'll go right into your quick anything, the manager.
Just with the UEZ, we're writing that billboard, starting in January eighteenth, so the open Mount Holly businesses doesn't intend to join the UEZ, can do it in four week periods, so we may have the billboard that the business can pay two hundred and thirty-five dollars to advertise on it for weeks.
That's all. Anything on this listener side?
Nothing, Mr. Merritt.
Thank you. I'll just pause there until... This one looks like, yeah. Oh, no, sir. Pizza, I should have the rest there. I didn't try that. I just make sure we're both pushing. Rest them.
So, the regular meeting, I guess, we've got a resolution, you want to do a...
Do we need any resolution?
What was the regular meeting?
A resolution.
I guess what we're waiting on, there's, there's not a matter to present the public conference with. Where is the Kansas City?
It's at the FedEx store in Mount Laurel. That was not my fault. There's a lot of things under my power, but that's not one of them.
Power's just busting on you.
I know, I felt, I wanted to cry so bad, I'm sorry, so.
You might work up.
You, I, I guess you want us to send that to them now? It's a nice, it's a nice key.
Yeah, when he gets here, they're, they're in town.
Yeah, okay. And then I'm mad because I switched it to have it delivered there because they're supposed to be the little Friday, and we were close, and they were going to pick it up, and since it didn't make it, I don't feel like going to a little world to pick it up in that house, but I don't have a choice.
Were you using the key?
We were presenting a key that's leaving Mount Holly that was here on Friday.
No.
Thought you told me earlier.
So, Lee, Lee over at Dog, that we can talk that we can present, that's it. We had to, at least, we're rather embarrassed, we don't have something.
Yeah, yeah. But, all worked out well. They gave me a letter or something, they gave, two minutes away from my office, the Mount Laurel FedEx building.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, that'd be great, it's a tough.
So they pass it, you know, three, four times a week.
Can I just send you an email? I won't send an attachment since they don't...
You try it. Now, for somebody, attachments seem to work.
Yeah, well, this munchy little firm it will.
Yeah, probably. Send me something tomorrow, just for the heck of it, just make a PDF, just see if it does, if it does work.
Cool, thank you, I appreciate it.
Why don't you don't think that I'll do anything?
Tomorrow, make sure those people that can do a private conversation, they get too quiet in there.
My God.
I apologize for screwing times in my head, but you get something, they keep telling me the correct times, and we're visiting, so they're going to some Friday. I'm like, hey, tell me what I'm doing. It's all good. I appreciate your patience.
Where I've been, Tom.
At least this is being coordinated, so we can prove to all residents that we have a wonderful working family here.
Who's that buzzing sound is getting to, out of the snap?
Like pictures of your feet?
Trying to test the comparison.
You had it up, and next thing you know, the flash goes off.
I thought it was a picture, and they weren't like this in the flash, well, I was like, okay.
We were impressed with what you sent us, and if you did send something to the old friend.
Works better.
Your office was a bit bad.
I thought so, too. I did, too.
So you're not the only one.
And that's what we call, which is, it's our, our challenge.
We realized just moments ago, when we first started, I said, let me check my email. Well, it's early. Well, do we want to run for?
Yeah, I know, so.
So, here, we're just waiting, okay, so, easy, easy on me.
There he comes.
Oh, he's here. Here we go. Correct? All right. All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to first introduce the chaplain, Pastor Tim Hutton, from the Second Baptist Church of Mount Holly. Is there, does anyone say anything, introduction?
Yes, I'd like to address Council and let them know that we started the dispassion program back in October, he's the only person initiated, we've been working on this entire year, we get it coordinated. And Pastor Hutton, he's the Seventh Baptist Church here in town, he's an RV graduate, and we're very happy to be able to get him as our first chaplain. He's very experienced here in Groveton County, he's a chaplain with several of the jurisdictions. Part of his responsibilities is part of the volunteer in the police program that we have, and part of his responsibilities is, that notifications, if we have anything tragic happening in town, he's a liaison to the community, he's also a counselor for anything that we would need here within the township itself, not only for the police officers, but any tragedy that would happen, and he volunteers his time and efforts. And what I'd like to do, as I said, I wanted to introduce you to Council and make it official at that one time, this, you know, appointment, and recognizing as the, our first chaplain of volunteer services of the Department of Decisions of Mount Holly Township. So, Pastor Hutton, I'd like to give you a word, to say you're the new chaplain. I think many of you ought to know him, and he has part of the congregation that supports us to hear with him today.
Absolutely. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make it official, hold it.
Chief. Now this way.
I'm sorry, guys, can I be the best I ever was? I'm so sorry.
We love the digital age.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for having the presentation, I have some accommodations, and those go to Officer Spencer, Brewer.
Lolita?
Lolita? All right. See you, Donnie?
Sedony.
With a formula that works, the Alshire Works and Home and Rural Foundation, I apologize for both of your names.
You have to remind quite well, and mine's the worst of the bunch.
I'm going to go figure, I think out of that.
Uh, if I can have Officer Sedony, Lolita, and Brewer, followed by Spencer. Again, these are certificates of accommodations for Lolita, Brewer, and Sedony for their reference in the Alshire Memorial, both for the fortieth memorial that we had here in town back in March, where we honored the former officers, Holmes, Works, and Alshire. All three of these officers, I'm leaving Spencer out for a moment, were tremendous in their support of raising funds to replace an aged motorcycle that we have. At that point in time, they, we have now raised, hopefully, sufficient enough funds where we can replace that motorcycle and dedicate it. We use it in parades, memorials, traffic enforcements, and unfortunately, this past visit of the Pope, we were recognized in to participate in, and that was one of the big wishes that we want to do now before the end of the year is, is purchase it. These officers have done quite a bit, so, in support of it. And again, I want to award the certificates of commendation to Officer Sedony, Lolita, and Officer Brewer. And I left out Officer Spencer just for the moment, because out of the four officers, this is his support team. Officer Chris Spencer is actually getting a meritorious service award, which allows him to actually wear the commendation in his apparel as special recognition. He has dedicated almost a time, almost as much as his own time as he's been actually on duty this year towards this goal of a dedication, he's brought a lot, all four of them have, but specifically under CLIP, he brought a lot of good notoriety, both in the police department, specifically the township, and he's being awarded this particular one as a special recognition. Thank you very much, and ladies.
Thanks.
And if you have Officer Brewer in the name here, one more time, I think this is... I'm not sure if this one would need to be gendered or not, somebody still in your program, you know, I think.
Thing I know is about is both the service.
Officer Brewer actually got her associates in criminal justice not too long ago from Rowan University, and Rowan actually approached us. She was such an outstanding student and best represented both police department as well as the township itself, that they made her the poster child for their recruitment. They asked our, our permission, I gave it to them, and that has done nothing but made us very proud of our, and her accomplishments. And this is being pushed throughout the whole state of New Jersey, particularly here in Groveton County though, because they've opened up new avenues for criminal justice majors in police work itself, and that is representing us, township, and the police department very well, again, for this, who's a radical group? Again, this certificate of commendation for your efforts and, and example professionalism, and reflecting the tremendous image of yourself, the township, for this department. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
With the, the time, sure, and that was all of it. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
All right, we'll bring this up into council now. So we'll start with that.
A, a minor complaint on our public works department, um, they were actually on time picking up leaves, I didn't have my leaves out in the curb. So if you could pass along to them, what a great job, they've actually, it's kind of been offhand, but they're doing a great job around town.
Absolutely.
I wasn't prepared for them to be on time, and, uh, so I have to go to my next leaf cycle.
That's a good show, it must have been done in the past.
Right, exactly.
A relative market now, that's good news. Eddie? Luke?
Just real quick, I know, after the whole presentation, there's an attorney dealing out of here, but I did want to say that, um, I know council does, I know the residents do, um, I think have a complete, uh, renewed trusting and faith in the entire department, um, they go above and beyond continuously, helping where needed, from helping organize things like Christmas presents and things, and lunches, and just community events, and do a volunteer time on their own time as well, and those help around town, and, uh, you know, not many people here are left to do what applause they deserve and applause. Next is, um, a Christmas tree lighting that we had on Friday, it was, I think, a huge success, um, I think the only complaint I received was that they were not expecting the snow in Mount Holly that evening, um, so, um, I'm not sure if you were there, Matt Jules, we had, we had some fire, we saw, they were, they were close, practicing they were meant to do that, but the result was the paper shrapnel, uh, fell and it went dead. Safe as it may be, and passed by the fire inspector, um, it did show kind of a need to go, winter wouldn't land for at least three minutes, um, downtown, but aside from that, um, not much else to talk about, with that being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
More favor? Here we go. Next regular scheduled meeting is Monday, December fourteenth at seven PM.